Madeline Albright, former United States Secretary of State. And Bert J. Brewstein was a founding member of the Brewstein, Shapiro, Frank and Barone, and a longtime resident of Tana Waukele. Thank you. We're going to start with our pledge allegiance, then a moment of silence for Ukrainian people. To everyone out here today, we have a full agenda today. Today, we have County legislator Mike Paduk in the house. Thank you for coming. It's great to see everyone tonight. We are here to celebrate Women's History Month, to bring our community together, to have a better community. To me and many out there, the first woman that comes to celebrate in my mind is my mom. Because without her, I will not be here. A mother is every child's first love. I wanted to bring my mother up here, but she refused, as she is low-key, doesn't like the attention. Her answer to me was, we as mother, we just do what we have to do for our family, without thinking about getting recognized. We just do. Therefore, it was important for me to recognize women in our community, who not only do for their families, but also for our communities through their businesses and their supportive community groups. Here in town, we have approximately 35 employees. Out of those 35, seven are males. So, does that mean the Tana Waukele is run by women? So... So... So, to all our honorees tonight, be patient. We have a lot of women who have helped shape our community. We're going to go with them, and we're about to start. Turn it on. That's not working. Alright, it's not working. So, we'll move on. No, we'll move on. I was going to play a song by Beyonce, "Who Runs the World." Okay? It's something different, you know? I like to change it up. So, if my councilman would like to stand down with me, we'll go through the awards and the honorees. Yeah, that's not gonna happen. So, what we're going to do is we're going to start with the fire department. Over the years, we've seen firefighters. And in Tana Waukele, we have seven different fire districts, all volunteers. And I thought it was a great idea to see who are these firefighters, who are women who have been involved over the years. So, we're going to start with Bloomingburg. We have Assistant Chief Charles Grunzwell.
The first woman firefighter ever in Bloomingburg was Patty Mead. The second woman firefighter for Bloomingburg was Christina Best. And the third woman was Amory Miller.
Appreciate it. Anyone want to take pictures? Now's the time, while they're up here, take the pictures, and the family.
You guys are the star of the show.
Yes. Thank you. Congrats, ladies. Good job. Next, we have Howells. And Howells, we have Chief Jerome Newman.
Sorry, for the Howells Fire Department, female firefighters over the years. 1996, we have firefighter Sherry Niger. She also served as the Fire Company President. In 2002, we had Lauren Coleman. 2003, we had Adrian Scott, who also served as the Fire Company President. And 2005, and here tonight with us, firefighter Debbie Finn also served as company president. In 2007, we had firefighter Jennifer Stevens, who also served as the Fire Company Vice President. In 2010, and here with me tonight is Tammy Stevens, who served as the Fire Company President. In 2011, we had firefighter Danielle Stevens. And in 2013, we had firefighter Megan Stevens.
Thank you. It's just great watching, you know, firefighters, women up here. You think about any one day, they can be saving any one of us. It's great. Next, we got Pocatello, Chief Wayne Milton.
Alright, we got just a few, and we got a couple milestones in accounting, so I'll go as quickly as I can. Not here today, Cynthia Barth. She's been with us for 12 years. Next is our current president of the Fire Company, Jen Cody. Been active for 23 years. Not here today is her daughter, who's a brand-new junior. We have Marina Cologne. She was active for five years. She's no longer with us. The next is, she has a lot of titles. Past President, Second Vice President of the Orange County Firemen's Association, and the best medical officer I've ever had, Alina Grunwall. The next two both served for four years and are no longer with us, Jocelyn Kyles and Jamie McGar. Next is a... Is a kind of a pleasure. She was a commissioner before she was a firefighter. She almost has a year under her belt, and that's Margaret McNamara. The next one is near and dear to my heart. She's my second daughter, and she's affectionately known as Alpha because she rides with me. She gives me all the information I can't read while I'm driving down the road, Caitlin Melon. Not with us, Carrie Montgomery. She's a past captain. Next, this one, this firefighter's been active for three years. She's also our secretary, Dawn Morrison. Next is one of our six-month members. She came over. Her son was with us for a long time, and she decided that she liked what he was doing, so Linda Olivia. Another relatively new member. Her husband is the captain of fire police. She liked listening to his stories, I guess. And she decided to join, and she's been very active. We enjoy having her around, Maribel Ortiz Thompson. Next is one of our lieutenants. She's been with us for eight years. We knew her when she was just wide-eyed and loved the flashy lights of the fire trucks. She's come a long way. She's also an EMT with the Tana Waukele EMS, Melissa Perezout. The next one is, she's a past secretary. She's not here, and she was a four-year member, Heather Santana. Two more, I promise. The next one has the record or holds the honorable title of First Female Chief in Orange County. Yeah, and unfortunately, she's not here. That's Bernadette Wilson. And last, but certainly not least, with one and a half, serving for 14 years, Kim Zuckerman. She's a past lieutenant.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, ladies. Next, we got Wash Knights. Wash Knights Todd Gray. Chief Todd Gray. Come on down, chief. How we doing, chief?
The first female firefighter we had in Wash Knights, and she was the first Orange County Volunteer Fireman Association President, Danielle Uba. The next one, she's not here tonight, is Jennifer Hicks. Next one is Terilyn Donovan. Next one, they're not here tonight, is Patty Edwards. Next one's not here either is Alexis Healy. The other one is Heather Healy, which she's not here either. Next one is Lisa Healy. Next one we have is a social member of us is Carol Healy. Next one's not here is Peg Peter Sabo. Next one is Kelsey Patrick. The next one I have is Lynn Simpson, soon to be Lynn Healy. Next one I have a social member is Terry DeGraw, not here. Kelsey just walked in. The next one is, special one to me, is my wife Kimberly Gray. Next one's not here is Marilyn Healy. Last one is not here either is Mackenzie Lafferty.
Thank you. Want to take a picture? Okay, that's the firefighters. Now, we're going to do the first police officer in the Tana Waukele. Susan Owen, who I believe is on Zoom. How you doing?
I'm doing fine. Thank you for inviting me.
There's the first police, female police officer in the Tana Waukele. Susan, you want to say a couple of words?
Um, well, I was hired in 1980, and I worked through 1990. And I've had several careers in my life, but the Tana Waukele job was the best job I ever had, with hands down. I loved working there, and it holds my heart.
Thank you for your service. If I'm correct, you was a sergeant?
Yes, I retired as a sergeant.
Retired as a sergeant in Tana Waukele in 1990. Thank you for your service. Your death certificate bound to you.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Robert Herpen, the police chief. I promise I'll be brief unless you want to give me your time from the town board meeting. Thank you. The meeting's going to end 20 minutes early time. Good evening. It's my partner in OEM. It's all good. So, we really appreciate everything women have done in law enforcement. Quite frankly, not that long ago, women began their careers in law enforcement as what was called matrons. And they were not, they were policewomen. They were not allowed to perform police work and go out on patrol. Society evolved. They became police officers. They went out on patrol. And every single day, they make a difference in our society. You know, we have officers here from our police department, Asia Watts, thank you for being here tonight. We have retired police officers, including Rosie Otero Walsh, who does a great job with our youth coalition, still involved in policing. And ironically enough, we're recognizing a Susan tonight. We have a Suzette Dietrich sitting here in the front row tonight. And I want to talk about Suzette Dietrich because I know her story. Suzette was involved in combat while she was in the Bronx with an armed suspect, and she won the Medal for Merit. The Medal for Merit is the third highest award in the New York City Police Department. So, we recognize the first Susan, who was the first female police officer, Susan, who retires as a sergeant, along with many others, including Suzette Dietrich, one of the highest award winners in the New York City Police Department. What a difference time has made, right? In such a short distance, from matrons to police officers, the saving lights making a difference. Thank you, supervisor, for recognizing all the police officers.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go into local business leaders. Now, when we decided a month ago that we're going to recognize Women's History Month, we decided, who are we going to recognize? There's so many, many women in this town. So, we couldn't do everyone. And I promise, next year, we'll do it again. But one lady stuck out that I have known for a long time. Her name is Pauline Fandanza. Now, we go back to our kids were young, have known this family. She's the owner and operator of Se La Vie Spa and Salon since 2006. I don't know if anyone's been there. I've been there. I've gotten massages and facials. Might not look it, but it's okay. She's lived in the community for many years. And through Little League, I've always had the contact with the family. And they're made the Tana Waukele their home for business. You know, they own many businesses in the town. And she runs Se La Vie. So, with that, I would like to honor Ms. Fandanza. If you could step up. Anyone who knows her, she is sweet as pie. So, let's hope her business, you know, everyone will go get massages and facials tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you. The next person we're going to recognize, Orange County Chamber of Commerce. I got elected, and we met, and we recognized that, should say, realized that we worked together for many years in White Plains. And she was with Heineken, the YMCA. She's in charge of Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber of Commerce has... You know, why is that important to the Tana Waukele? Well, I go around speaking to businesses, and every time they tell me about the Chamber of Commerce, and I ask, they say that this woman has helped her, helped them do their business. She's the president and the CEO. And they all speak highly of her. And I know her for many years, and I thought I saw her walk in. Heather Bell Meyer. Where are you? Come on, Heather. Thank you, Heather. This next business owner, I'm pretty sure everyone knows. Janet Barbello. Did I say it right? Barbaria. She's the owner and operator of Absolute Flowers since 1988. She's always donated her time and support to many nonprofit, especially Little League. She's always supported Little League, and everyone who knows me... She's always supported Little League and everyone who knows me, I like Little League a little, so. And she's always, always been there. And she came from Florida just for this and she's getting on a plane from here. I'm not telling you where she's going, but it's somewhere warm, so we all could be jealous. We got this thing with Spectrum, the eight o'clock, they cut us off, Zoomed Spectrum, but we're back, right? Okay. She has helped the town of Walkeel develop. And if you look at almost every project, big project in town of Walkeel since 2002, she has helped it develop. So what I feel they do, Maureen, can you come up? She is, you know, she does with development. She knows what she wants is what's best for the community, every time. Excited every time. About two weeks ago, I got a call from her to do, there was a press conference regarding 17 going to 86. And I said, okay, it's a press conference, I'm going over there. I get there, she goes, oh, by the way, you gotta speak. And I was like, I gotta speak. I look, there's about 100 people behind me during this press conference. And I'm saying to myself, how does she pull this off? All these people here, from union workers, politicians. I'm not a politician, but you know, elected officials and it was great. Thank you. Next, we're gonna speak about the community leaders. And we got a couple. There's one lady here who, she's not coming in? Okay, when you talk about town of Walkeel Little League, and I was middle town Little League. She doesn't know what's happening. And when you talk about town of Walkeel Little League, you always talk about one person. Everyone always says, yes, there's a president. She has held every position in the town of Walkeel, except president, of course. Nobody wanna be president of league. But Barbara has done an amazing job. Every time I speak to somebody, oh yeah, I spoke to Barbara. Barbara's not the president. Oh, I spoke to Barbara. I spoke to Barbara. And when the Little League season starts, I always see that phone call, Barbara. Town of Walkeel Little League. Barbara, would you come up? Barbara, would you come up? I'm gonna hear it tomorrow. I'm gonna hear it.
I can't believe you got me here.
Yes, yes. It's huge. Where are you? Thank you for bringing her. You're a big part of the town. And if you go, I believe it's Applebee's, her picture's on the wall. That's, you know that, right? In Applebee's. Yeah. And the reason I know when Applebee's first opened up, you know, back then I really didn't know the boundaries, town of Walkeel, middle town, all that fun stuff. And I go in there and I see town of Walkeel, Little League everywhere. And there's a picture of you. Yes, you are there. There you go. Let's take a picture. Get right in the middle. Okay. Next, we got someone everybody knows. She runs the town of Walkeel Police Youth Coalition. Okay? The town of Walkeel is lucky to have her. Okay? She has grown these youth to become positive leaders. And what she does for the town of Walkeel youth is exceptional and priceless. She is one of a kind. And I've told her from the day one, we're never getting rid of you, you're staying with us. And she's been nothing but positive, positive, positive. I don't think I've ever seen her not smile and not have anything negative, but was positive. Thank you Rosie. Ah, selfie queen. I love it. I love it.
None of this is possible without this lady right here, the middle of my mom.
Oh no, como estas?
Six, six of us are together and I thank God that she will not bear the wrath.
Like I said, mom. Thank you. Next, um, we have a young lady, Deborah Brooks Edmonds. She's on the police, police council. And you volunteer your time to be on the council and get elected. First time I met her, the first thing she said to me, how can I help? That's what's great about this community and why I love serving it. First thing was, how can I help? Okay, the next person, we're gonna go into government leaders. When I took office and I was doing the transition, I met with this woman to see what I was gonna do in regards to the town, the finances, all that fun stuff. And it's a lot. There is a lot. Every day I'm learning. And what impressed me about this woman was the knowledge. I asked a question, hold on a second. She had the answer. She gave me the answer and I felt, wow, very comfortable. She's dedicated to the job. She puts in countless hours away from her family to serve this town. Many, many days, I'm here, six, seven o'clock, and she's here. And I have to tell her, maybe it's time you go home. You know, your family, you know? She's meticulous and she is an example about a woman in the workforce should be like. She's still standing and she is a phenomenal controller. Toni Tracy? So we're almost done. But you know, I like doing this. I think it's important as a community for us, especially if it's going on in the world, for us to look back at our residents, our community that's important to us. Because I believe that's one of the most important things we need. We all live here. And we want our community to be positive and we want to be safe. The next person that we're gonna honor, she was a councilwoman in the town of Walkeel. In 1983 to 1991, then she served on the planning board. And during her time as a councilwoman, our supervisor got sick and she had to serve as the supervisor for a couple of months. She also was on the committee to build that nice community center that we have down on West Warren. What I feel they do, John Wolf, can you step up? Okay, we got one last one. The next one, I'm gonna have my commissioner of public work step up and help me with this one. Everybody knows her. She's been around a little longer than me. And she has served as our town clerk for the last 18 years. And always getting reelected. She has been phenomenal and you know, whenever I need something, I ask her, Louisa, what is this? What is that? She'll give me the answer. My little Lou, her brother, her younger brother, right? I'm done. I'm done. I'm done. I'm sorry about that. Oh, I'll buy, I'm sorry.
I would never say that. Just, yeah, real quick. Louisa has served the town of Walkeel collectively for 34 years. 19 years. 19 years as the elected town clerk. At the end of the day, strong women have always been paramount in my life. I'm the youngest of five children, youngest. But I had four older sisters. Okay, so I was raised in a house, literally, my mom, four sisters, five women, just me and my dad. So it was always, we knew who was gonna win at the end of the day, but ultimately, that leadership, that mentorship, my mom, I believe she's on the Zoom, she's watching. She's out there somewhere. My mom is 90 years old, 90 and a half. Louisa is her primary caregiver. Louisa lives with mom at home on the family, I guess we call it the family ranch. But ultimately, not only what she does for the town of Walkeel, but what she does for our family certainly needs to be recognized. And as as time transitions, she is transitioning into being the matriarch of our family. We do all the holidays at Louisa's house. We do, we do all the holidays at my mom's house with Louisa. She makes all the holiday meals. She honestly, and I think everybody knows how families can be, she honestly holds our family together. So at the end of the day, Louisa, please come up.
This place is my life. So between my family and the town of Walkeel, this is where I'm from, this is where I'll stay. People ask me, when are you gonna retire? I'm 60, so I could go at any time. But I think I'll follow in my mother's footsteps. She worked here until she was 82. So thank you gentlemen for the appreciation.
Thank you. And let's go Yankees. Thank you. That concludes our honorees. And we're gonna get back to town and Walkeel business. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay. We're gonna continue our meeting. First, we're gonna go historic moment in the town of Walkill. Uh, second assistant historian, Tom Naswory. We let's go.
Let's go. Hi, everybody. I'm Tom Naswory. I'm the second assistant town historian along with town historian Dottie Hunt Ingracia and assistant historian Gwen Nee Gillan Deserdo and volunteer June Vander Schaft. I wanna say hi to Zoom too, for those folks that are out there. I'm also president of the Town of Walkill Historical Association. The association presents historical programs each month on the second Saturday of the month, right here in town hall. Uh, I have three items that I wanna give you for your consideration. The first thing is, we want to recognize the town's semi-quinsentennial. See if you can say that that fast. Which way is the camera? Show it to Zoom. Can they see it? Anybody? Where's the camera? That way? Oh, right there. Oh. Okay, anyway, so that's what we're looking at. This is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the town of Walkill's inception. As I said, item one, the association presents historical programs once a month on the second Saturday in town hall at two P M. Our next program will be on Saturday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-two, at two P M. And will last about an hour. The guest speaker is Bruce Bergman. His program is Monhawk Preserve Sunrise and Sunset. The preserve is near New Paltz in Ulster County. Now, you may wanna note, the town of Walkill used to be a part of Ulster County. A lot of things change, identities change, and we'll get into that a little more later. If we could unveil the picture, Ryan? Wait, just turn around. The next aspect that I'm gonna be talking about is mastodons. And there's a guy that, uh, is, you wanna let me just? That's what they look like ten thousand years ago.
Do you want the tripod over there? Leave it there? Bring it over. You may block the camera. It's on.
One way or another, anyway. So that's a picture of mastodons. They look like elephants. And in a bilingual sense, en español, they are called, now wait for it, elephants, or actually elefante. So that makes it easy. And I wanna thank Darlene for the translation of the mastodon in Spanish, or español. As Senior Burton used to teach me back way back in high school. Now, that's another old story. Uh, it is well documented by county historian Joanna Parion that thirty-eight skeletons have been found in Orange County since seventeen eighty, making the county unofficial capital of exhumed. That word's okay, well, the zoom. Mastodons. Two skeletons have been found here, one in Scottstown, just about a mile away from here, just below the Scottstown Church. And the other one was on, uh, Bowser Road, uh, over on the other side of town. That was found in twenty thirteen, just a couple of years ago. There's been a couple of other rumored finds of skeletons, but I have no documentation of them. One is rumored to be down on two eleven going towards Montgomery, near the Goshen Turnpike. But I haven't got any information on that. The documentation, this is the one on Bowser Road. This book alone costs fifty dollars. It took three or four years to do it. And there's a lot of detailed information in there. My news is wrong. They also have, you guys, I think, have some of those copies, the Scottstown mastodon, which was found in eighteen forty, forty-three. So you gotta figure, elephants have been just running around here for years. It's amazing how many there really are. I can do that. So the show, okay. For those at home on Zoom, we now have the picture available. The, the camera wasn't working too too good. So, uh, I don't know, we just put it on the floor? But you wanna hold it the whole time? Okay. I can still see the boss, so we're okay. That's good. So that was found on Bowser Road, the other book. Now, the word mastodon comes from, in part, the Greek word odin uh, for tooth, as in orthodon dentist type of thing. And, uh, through transliteration, transliteration from the Greek, vialantino linguiscus. And the dialect of PG sceranoism. And, boss, this is really tough for me to say. You're making me do this on a PG level. History says it's a little more severe than PG, but for you, we'll do the PG. The PG version.
You're doing great.
The mast is for, this is the PG part, inverted ice cream cones on the top of the cusps of the teeth. And they're about the size of shoebox. This is a mammoth tooth. There's two different types. There's mastodons and mammoth. And the big difference is, you know, the flat teeth that woolly mammoths use to eat grass and hay and stuff like that.
Is that one tooth?
It's one tooth. They only got like three or four. The mastodon tooth, you can see it's slightly different, and it has all these ice cream cones on, on top, because they ate trees and branches, and they stayed in the woods where, where it was cold. Now, you can see the guy had a tough dentist, because it looked like a lot of cavities around in the, in the top. These are replicas. They're not the real thing. The real tooth cost about forty thousand. Oh, okay. Yeah. So they're goodbye giving the very pointed teeth, chewing for trees and branches. As I said, each tooth is about the size of a shoebox. Now, I've just received breaking news that the study of mastodons has recently reached, and there's the word again, semi-quinsentennial status. They've been studying mastodons for over two-hundred-and-fifty years, all kinds of information for them. And that's according to the University of Oregon. Therefore, I hereby offer the following resolution for the town board to consider the adoption of the American mastodon as an indigenous inhabitant. Now, the resolution that I'm proposing, I believe you all have copies. A resolution to the town board of the town of Walkill, recognizing the mastodon as an indigenous inhabitant of the town of Walkill. Whereas, based on historical research undertaken by the deputy Walkill Town Historian in eighteen forty-three, a documented mastodon skeleton was unearthed by a farmer in a field on the edge of a swamp near the Scottstown Presbyterian Church. Whereas, the skeleton was stored in a barn on Foster Road near Streeper Park and subsequently shipped to Albany, where it is presumed to remain intact today. And sometimes when things go to Albany, you never know what's gonna happen to them, to use the word. Whereas, another mastodon skeleton was unearthed with full scientific documentation in twenty thirteen on privately owned black dirt area off the Bowser Road. And whereas the collectible remains of other mastodons have been reportedly found within the town, including an undocumented skeleton discovered on Montgomery Road, now two eleven, near the Goshen Turnpike in the nineteen thirties. And whereas mastodons are reportedly most prolific in the Hudson Valley, more than any other place in the USA. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the town board of the town of Walkill finds and declares that the mastodon was an indigenous inhabitant and dweller in the area of the Hudson Valley, subsequently incorporated as the town of Walkill during that period of Earth's history and development, when mastodons lived to their extinction. Yeah, you all got copies. That's item two. I just have to do one thing. That's okay. Item three, in regards to the town's semi-quinsentennial, that is hard to say. I offer this preamble to the upcoming Founder's Day program on Thursday, April seventh, twenty twenty-two. Why Middletown? As you may recall, in sixteen forty-three, now I'm sure some of you remember that, uh, Walkill was the precinct of Walkill and the menacing angle patent. That's the way they did subdivision, huge sections of land. All part of Ulster County, including other townships that would be divided out of Walkill. And then later will be made part of Orange County. And then Rockland County will be separated from Orange County. So things are always changing. Where is this? Where is that? And try to find things historically. With all these boundary changes, it's really, really quite difficult. Just where is the town of Walkill? Oh, sure. You can clearly see it on a map. As time marches on, the town of Walkill's identity is sort of faded away, you know, like identity theft. The town of Walkill used to be inhabited by Native American Indian tribe, uh, the Fagawis. They ran with Chief Joseph Brant, who raided the poor Jervis area. Yeah, even Commissioner Louis Ingracia, he knows this stuff. Also Frank Skumachi, God rest his soul, worked his way up from dog catcher, the building inspector, and town cop. He determined that the tribe was led by Chief Tawakal, the namesake of the town of Walkill Volunteer Ambulance Board. Dr. Bernie Levy, God rest his soul, a choir practitioner and planning board chairman, along with his wife Lenore, as she rests in peace, worked tirelessly trying to restore the town's image. They both were descendants of the tribe and proud of it. They're always saying, we're the Fagawis. Proud of that. So, this leads. Hey, hey. Soon, so, that's, my eyes are failing again. You got those glasses? Leads to the diminished identity vis-à-vis the U S Postal Service. Why is almost all the mail in Walkill identified as Middletown? Some of you might know. Well, now get this. It turns out Middletown is where the actual post office building is. They get the mail and then redistribute it. Also, it doesn't help the municipal boundaries between the town of Walkill and Middletown. Also, it doesn't help the municipal boundaries between the town of Walk Hill and Middletown are so broke. And caused by various annexations of Walk Hill by the city of Middletown. Even Congressman Ben Gilman could not get the post office to make the change. The best they could do was to add a zip code, one oh nine four one. Which is still called Middletown. And with that, that's set kickoff for our semi-quintcentennial. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. Okay. So next we have public participation for agenda items only. We'll start with the audience. Anybody got anything? Anyone, anyone on Zoom? Anyone on Zoom? Back to the audience. Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Next we go to correspondence. Madam Clerk.
Uh, we have a letter that was addressed to the police chief. On February second, two thousand and twenty-two, we were involved in an MVA on Route two eleven. While entering Dunning Road, Officer Daniel Graham was responding patrol initially checking that my wife and I were okay and then continued to process the scene. While fire apparatus, ambulance, tow truck added to the chaos of this busy intersection. Since the other operator had left the scene, he located and interviewed witnesses curbside. We appreciate the professionalism he displayed at that time and with telephone calls and emails, he kept us abreast of the available information. Finally, when the investigation was complete, he advised us to secure an amended report at the station to assist in the insurance and rental process. Please convey our thoughts to Officer Graham and see that his file reflects our gratitude. Uh, sincerely, Carol and Charlie Shields.
Thank you. Next, we do resolutions?
Yes.
Resolution, the town board of the town of Walker authorizing the commissioner of public works to advertise for bids for chain link fence. Town board hereby authorized and directs the commissioner of public works to issue a bid for chain link. And the commissioner of public work shall report back, report back to the town board with the results of said bids. May I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Who do you have projected date on that?
Yes, I believe we're going to open the bids the same day as the traffic signals to twenty-first at ten AM.
Resolution, the town board of the town of Walker recognizes, recognizing the mastodon as an indigenous inhabitant of the town of Walk Hill. Therefore hereby be resolved that the town board of the town of Walk Hill finds and declares that the mastodon was an indigenous inhabitant and dweller of the area of the Hudson Valley. Subsequently incorporated as a town of Walk Hill during that period of the Earth's history and development when mastodons lived prior to their extinction. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Good job, Tom.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Resolution of the town board of the town of Walker appointing persons to the position of part-time police dispatcher. Resolve the town board of the town of Walker hereby appoints Jared Cologne and Tahir Ayala. To the position of part-time dispatchers to serve in said capacity at the town of Walker Police Department. Effective immediately, provided that one, the chief of police approves said appointees following a final employment interview. Two, all background checks are satisfactorily completed. And three, all appropriate documentation is submitted, submitted, I'm sorry. And accepted by the Orange County Department of Human Resources Civil Service. Have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next we go to councilman committee reports. Um, I will start, uh, to my right with Councilman Johnson.
I'll see now.
How do you go backwards?
Things a little different.
Finally, Ward four comes first. Alright, so again, I always start with the favorite water and sewer. Um, so the end of winter is a good thing for all of us, but it means a busy time for them. Uh, all the stuff that is accumulated in the sewer mains and right of ways has to be cleaned out. So they have access to the, um. Valve, should there be an issue, an emergency where they need to, um, uh, you know, turn them off and, and fix the lines. So right now, the department is working in the Mechanics Town area, cleaning out the water valves. So if you do see them. Uh, the employees working, please slow down, give them a break, cause they, you know, certainly don't wanna, uh, be in any danger. The, uh, we have two water department employees who were enrolled in the wastewater treatment school and two others are currently in the water treatment school. This is a good thing because eventually when all the training is done, that will, uh, that will provide the town with additional operators. Um, you know, plant operators to keep everything running smoothly. Everybody's favorite, fire hydrant flushing. So that's gonna be April fourth to the sixteenth. Um, and as always, if they're flushing a hydrant in your neighborhood, you could experience some discolored water. Um, but it will clean up, um, quite quickly and it shouldn't be an issue. They did have several leaks. Uh, there was a number of service leaks that needed to be repaired as well as one water main. And as always, the town would like to thank the residents for their understanding with that. In the sewer department, they continue to work with, um, P and D engineering to address the total trihalomethanes and haliosetic acids at the Woodside Knowles. Um, they are doing aggressive sampling and they're trying to figure out the root of the issue. And hopefully they'll have that, uh, resolved as we did in other water districts. Good news, the results from the first quarter sampling was below the action level. Um, but unfortunately, you're still gonna get a letter because they have to take the, uh, previous year's four quarters and add all the numbers together and do a total average. But again, they're working to get that corrected as soon as they can. So if you get a letter, don't panic. If you have questions, you're welcome to call me or Commissioner Gracia. Either one of us will fill you in. It's, um, not too bad to understand. The wastewater treatment plant, um, with the warmer temperatures has to get the disinfection system up and that's up and running. It's a UV system. Uh, they'll be putting that together. And as always, the maintenance. And checks of the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant is a three sixty-five day process. So those guys do a great job and gals. Um, in the building department for the month of February, they had, uh, written a hundred and six permits. The certificates issued for, um, completion, completion and for occupancy was a hundred and twenty-six. Collected fees of sixty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, addressed forty-seven complaints and carried out six hundred and ninety-two inspections. Also, great work by that department. Uh, finally, the accounting department has been working on preparing for the annual independent audit. That will take place on the week of April twenty-fifth. They are finalizing the cash reconciliations and reconciling items that have been identified and mostly resolved. A soft close of twenty twenty-one was performed in the financial software in the beginning of January. But the actual entries and reconciliations of the general ledger are now being completed as well. The accounts receivable software that was implemented in December is working well. Um, it, we tested over the past few months with, uh, bills for, um. Fuel sold to other governments and it allowed for easier tracking of the receivables. The department will have another touch of truck meeting with admins tomorrow. Another touch of truck. I'm thinking about the next thing. Sorry. The department will have another touch point meeting with admins tomorrow to finalize the date of utility billing implementation. Uh, at this point, due to the supply issues with billing paper, we're not able to implement the April billing, but hope to have that, um, corrected shortly. Uh, comments, I just would like to say congratulations to Mike Sorrentino on his promotion in DPW. He went to the HEO one. Uh, so, uh, shout out to him. And, um, we do have the bulk pickup coming, which is everybody's favorite. Uh, this year we got the short straw, so we're last, fourth ward. So it won't be until Sunday, May fifteenth. So that's when you wanna put your, um, stuff out by the curb that Sunday night. Please don't put it out earlier, cause it will just sit there. Um, you know, until they can come pick it up. So Sunday, May fifteenth, put your stuff out. And, uh, we won't meet again before Easter. So just, I wanna give a shout out to everyone for happy Easter. And, um, you know, spend time with your families, cause that's the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilman Meyer?
Uh, so it's been a while since I've reported on this, but I wanted to provide an update on the Orange County changing the addiction treatment ecosystem. Because this is important in our community. Um, the county has been making great strides prior to the pandemic. However. The pandemic has really impacted the ability to connect people and to connect with people and to connect people with services. Unfortunately, in twenty twenty-one, there were six hundred and forty-six suspected overdoses in Orange County. This compared to six hundred and fourteen in twenty twenty. Of those six hundred and forty-six in twenty twenty-one, a hundred and thirty-six were fatal as compared to a hundred and eighty-eight in twenty twenty. Fatalities decreased by over twenty-seven percent. The administration of naloxone in twenty twenty-one as compared to twenty twenty increased by approximately twenty-two percent. So many people are alive today as a result of the administration of naloxone, which is generally in direct response to the police coming out now. And, uh, and administering that. So we all wanna thank our police department as they've taken on that role in many of our communities. We here in the town recognize many of our neighbors are struggling, whether it be with drugs, depression, anxiety, and we want everyone to know there's help out there. Orange County supports Project Hope, which is now providing kits for families in need. These kits include naloxone, three eleven contact information, linkage to treatment. Hope Not Handcuffs Flyer, syringe container and syringe exchange flyers, as well as fentanyl strips to test substances for fentanyl. If you need help, need one of these kits or wanna contact Project Hope helpline. Um, if the number is eight four four eight six three nine three one four. Orange County residents in need of help or somebody you speak with can call the crisis call center at three one one. And if you're suffering from substance use disorder, remember, the town of Walk Hill has Hope Not Handcuffs. And you can feel free to come into our police station at any time and somebody will place you into treatment. There is help for anybody who needs it. All they have to do is reach out. In addition, I wanna congratulate the county on the success of its three one one program, which is being administered by the Mental Health Association of Orange County. Thanks to three ones, three one one success, the state is using three one one as a model. And will be rolling out its own three-digit crisis intervention helpline. Since we are celebrating women tonight, I wanted to congratulate and honor, uh, Darcy Miller, the commissioner of the Department of Social Services. Nadia Allen, the former executive director of the Mental Health Association of Orange County and Angela Jo Hayes. Uh, the current executive director of the Mental Health Association of Orange County. They have done an amazing job in bringing help to those who need it most within our community. In addition, I wanna also recognize, um, Annette Cars, who is the executive director of Hope Not Handcuffs. Um, she has done a great job in expanding that organization, um, all over the state and are helping people every day. Um, and I would like to give them a round of applause as well, because they've done an excellent job. Um, in our community, in Orange County and throughout the state with their work. Senior, senior Saint Patrick's Day lunch was an amazing event. There was music, there was dancing, everyone seemed to enjoy themselves. I wanna thank Jay, um, and his team for setting up the event. Uh, of course, Gary Lake, who did the cooking, um, he does a great job every year. Um, and everybody else who helped organize and make it such a success. Um, I, it was nice to see everybody celebrating together again. It was nice to see all the seniors. Um, it's important for all of us to get back to nor, what the new normal is and being a community as we saw here tonight. Um, I also wanna reiterate, uh, bulk pickup, uh, is gonna be around again. Ward three will be, uh, May eighth. So I've been hearing about people wanting it at the beginning of May, so we are May eighth, which is the beginning of May. Um, birthdays, some birthdays I wanna recognize, uh, next week, Luanne Gracia, as you heard, he's a hundred and what, fifty something, right, Lou? So wish Lou a happy birthday if you see him. Uh, also Bob Brump, uh, Ann Baffa, uh, the wife of Tony Baffa and Barry Wuzi. Um, residents of the town of Walk Hill and great people. So, uh, happy birthday to you all. Uh, they all have birthdays in the month of April. And obviously, uh, as Mr. Johnson said, I wanna wish everybody a happy Easter and a happy Passover. Um, enjoy the, enjoy your time off and enjoy your time with your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Meyer. Councilman Valentin?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, I'll start with the police department. The department is currently at forty-eight full-time, um, police staff. We currently canvass the civil service list, seeking certified candidates for vacant spots. Our arrest record to date, year to date are three point four percent up, three point four percent eighty-nine for twenty twenty-two versus eighty-six for twenty twenty-one. The police community council, the next meeting will be held at the community center at seven PM on Thursday, April fourteenth. Our police youth coalition, the next meeting will be held at the community center on Tuesday, April nineteenth. Game night, youth coalition will be hosting a domestic violence presentation on Saturday, April sixteenth from eleven AM to four PM. Uh, as we've done every year, except last, last few years, this year's night, National Night Against Crime. Event will be held August second at the Tonne Walk Hill Little League Field. Additional details are forthcoming as we plan these, this event. Um, this year, Mary Olsen's Memorial Tournament will be held on June twelfth at the Tonne Walk Hill Little League. And this will be with the Police Youth Softball League. A school resource officer initiative. Recently, the Tonne Walk Hill Police Department has noted a significant increase in incidents involving violence and drug use within. Many of the six public schools where our officers are currently assigned as school resource officers. For example, when comparing the previous school year, September twentieth through June twenty-first, June twenty twenty-one, to the current school year. September twenty twenty-one through June twenty twenty-second. Reported assaults increased one thousand percent. School threats either in person or via social media increased seven hundred percent. And bullying increased a hundred percent. This disturbing trend is not isolated to the Tonne of Walk Hill, but is instead part of the national trend. In January of twenty twenty-two, the Tonne of Walk Hill Police Department undertook an initiative to evaluate our SRO program. To determine if we are responding appropriately to the ever-increasing threats to our children. Specifically, we have determined that neither Tonne of Walker Police Department nor any other police department has a uniform program. That addresses the underlying cause of, among other things, violence involving youth. It has been widely held that increasing a person's emotional intelligence, EQ, financial intelligence. And non-violent conflict resolution lessens a person's towards violence. Consequently, the goal of the Tonne of Walk Hill Police Department is to design a program encompassing the foregoing. That can be uniformly administered by the SROs. Accordingly, the Tonne of Walker Police Department has a meeting with consultants, with consultants that have subject matter area expertise. In the affirmation areas with the goal of designing a uniform SRO program with an eye towards a long-term approach. To address school violence. This plan has received support from, among others, the Tonne of Walker Governing Body, the Tonne of Walker Police Community Council. The enlarged city of Middletown School and the Pinehurst School District. You are currently working with the state elected officials to obtain funding in order to properly design and implement this groundbreaking and innovative program. These funds will be utilized for, among other things, to contract with professionals that have subject matter expertise in the above referenced areas. To design programs that will allow us to teach children skills that will reduce the ever-increasing threat of violence affecting our youth. It's, it's tough reading those statistics. It's tough knowing that it's right in our backyard. These things are happening in the schools. Um, these kids have tremendous, tremendous challenges in today's world. Um, amongst their peers, amongst the, the environment they live in. So, uh, I commend the police department, the chief, in trying to create a program that will address. You know, if you can think, in the past, we had a dare program, um, that addressed early on. Um, I guess drugs and other things, but in today's world, there's different challenges. There's different things that these kids, um. Are being challenged with, not only. But in today's world, there's different challenges. There's different things that these kids are being challenged with, not only physically, but online. They get their phones, on the computers, and in those avenues, in those vehicles, they're subject to other things. So hopefully, we can get to a place that we can help them and give them a place where they can go and get some help addressing these things. For our parks, as was stated, corned beef dinners was a success, served 60 at the Community Center and 60 folks to go plates. So we had people coming in and sitting down and eating, and we have people that came in as a drive-through to just pick up the food and go. It's been mentioned before, crudos to all the volunteers, and I know Gary Lake spent many, many hours preparing the food and getting everything ready. So it's all appreciated. Our dead tree removal completed at Circleville Park, Harrell property, Harrell car property in Corn's Campground. We removed about 70 trees total. We're painting new offices, rooms for the PD, and we'll be installing drop ceiling next. And they started cleaning all parks and mowing the sites. Our Tonnawalk Hill Soccer League Soccer Club is looking to start Spring League April 3rd, and the Little League is looking to hold the parade opening day on April 9th. So we'll be prepping fall fields starting next week, and we'll be having an Easter egg hunt at Circleville Park, April 16th at 10:00 AM, ages infant to 12. The other things to mention is the new dog park at Circleville Park. Highway Department has cleared all the trees and stumps, added drainage, and now stockpiling fill to move onto the site. When it dries up and some more after the fill and grading, we'll be able to have the fence installed and available to have people, folks, come in with their best friends and use the park and use that facility. Comments? So as I mentioned before, we read recently where there were threats and incidents in our local schools, and they've been addressed. The schools have gotten together with the officials, with the town, to address certain things and needs of the kids that are being affected there, and best of luck to them. And I know that a lot of parents have received messages from our superintendent. So I think the biggest message there is that if you have a situation with your child and/or the child has a situation with anyone else, there are vehicles and avenues to go. Do not hesitate to reach out and ask for help. If you need someone to speak to your child, everyone is there and available for them. Last but not least, we spoke about bulk pickup for the second ward. Our bulk pickup will be Sunday, May 1st. Again, as a reminder, please have your bulk out that weekend, not sooner, because as Councilman Johnson mentioned, it just sits out there for a length of time. And so Sunday, May 1st will be our bulk pickup. Last but not least, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a happy Passover. Enjoy your family and that's the last, sorry. Happy Easter and happy Passover. Thank you. Thanks, Will.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Paul.
Okay, Starwood Highway. In the month of March, we've been installing new drainage on Maltese Drive to prepare this road for pavement this summer. We've also been doing some tree removals and ditching on Sands Road for that road to be paved as well this summer. The blacktop plant is open, well, is going to be open on Monday, and we will now go out and start doing some repairs on all the potholes that have surfaced over the winter months. Post 1181 Veterans Affairs 424, so April 24th, from 8 to 12, they'll be having a pancake breakfast down at the Community Center, West Warren Drive. There is no charge. This is, the post wants to give back to the community. The way the commander puts it is basically that everybody's been through a lot these last couple of years, and they haven't been able to really meet up, have functions, and they just want to give back to everybody. It's free, as I said. However, donations will always be accepted, so. And just a reminder that they meet on the first Tuesday of every month at 7:30 at the Community Center. All vets are welcome. Assessor's office has gone through the data collection cycle and is now in its review stage by the staff and is being prepared for evaluation by the assessor. All exemptions, some divisions, merges, special districts, changes received by the taxable status date are being reviewed by the assessor. The 2022 tentative assessment roll is underway and will be published by May 1st. We would also like to welcome Ralph Carr, newly appointed member to the Board of Assessment Review. The Board of Assessment Review will convene on Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, to hear any grievances. If you have any questions regarding exemptions or assessment and administration, contact the assessment team during Town Business Hours at 692-7810, or email assessor@tonewalkhill.com. Going on to my comments. So quick congratulations, Michael Sorrentino, promoted Heavy Equipment Operator One. And also congrats to our new dispatchers, Jared Cologne and Teri. Say it again? Ayala, thank you. Congratulations to them. What else do we have? We have, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall Committee has a couple of fundraisers going on. One that's going on right now, and that is the Hometown Hero Banner Program. The idea, we've spoken about this for the last couple of months, but the idea is to line Route 211, Winning Way, and also the poles around Veterans Memorial Park over by Matty's Diner. They are 18 inches by 36 inches picture, and it's not just veterans for veterans. It's also for police, fire, EMS, doctors, nurses. That's why it's Hometown Hero Banner Program. You can look us up on Facebook, Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall Committee. Also, we have on May 1st. So this is a motorcycle run. It's going to start at the Orange County Veterans Cemetery in Goshen and make its way finally ending, make its way through the Tonnawalk Hill to drive by the wall, drive by the Statue of Liberty, and finish up in the Galleria Parking Lot. We're going to have a DJ there. There'll be food, other vendors, we're calling it like the after-party. So that should be a real good time. That's May 1st. And if you're going to do the ride for the first 250 registered riders, they'll be given a commemorative PIN. I know Mike is going to talk about the banners in a few minutes. And I believe that is all I have. Happy Easter, everyone. Oh, and everyone's mentioning bulk pickup. So bulk pickup is for the first ward, April 24th, same date as the pancake breakfast. So you can go have breakfast and then unload your basement in the afternoon. So thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Congratulations to all that were honored tonight. Last night, we promoted Michael Sorrentino, congratulations. And today, we appointed dispatchers. Congratulations. May 5th, we had Quafic Supervisor here in this room. It was well-received. So it was good to have good conversation with the residents on a one-to-one. We're looking to do it again in April. St. Patty's Day, the lunch in, to me, was successful, was great. The live music was fantastic. I thought it was, I was in the kitchen when they started playing. I thought it was a computer playing or some music. It was actually the gentleman playing the music, Joe, and he was good, so good that even our receiver of taxes was not here today. She got up and started dancing with Councilman Meyer's mother, and it was good. It was fun watching that, watching the seniors in their chair, real propping, they're suddenly start dancing. It was good. We have a couple of events coming up. On April 7th, it's going to be the Tonnawalk Hill Birthday Party, Founder's Day. 250 years ago, on April 7th, 1772, Tonnawalk Hill was incorporated. And we want everyone to come out and sing happy birthday to the town of Waukele. We're going to have some historic moments, people speaking. Yes, we will bring Tom back, and we have some other residents who are going to come and speak about different periods of the town. And we'll have cake, coffee, and hope everybody can come out and sing happy birthday to the town. We have Easter egg on April 16th, Touch a Truck, May 7th. Both events will be at Circleville Park. And for the St. Patty's Day, I would like to thank Jay and his parks, DPW and Gary. Gary, thank you. I had a good dinner that night. Never had corned beef. It was really good. Thank you very much. I'm just wondering, we do it again. Will you cook for me again? I enjoyed it. Thank you very much. Happy Easter, happy Passover to the residents. Lou, happy birthday. You're older than me. And one last thank you, one last thank you. A lot of the things that are going on in the town cannot be done without Darlene, my assistant, and Larry. Let's give them a hand. With that, that's all I have. Next, we have Town Clerk.
Thank you. It was nice tonight to honor some women that have done a lot of things for the town. Just have a few names I'm going to add, because I'm old. Mrs. Wolf is here with us tonight, and I've known her probably a long time, so we won't say how long. But along with her serving as a councilwoman, we also had, and I'm sure you remember Kathy Bertay was a councilwoman, Irene Wall, who was my councilwoman, I think for probably two terms, I think, and she has since passed away. And then also, who was my councilwoman, was Nina Genske, who also sometimes was a rebel rouser, retired, moved away, and unfortunately passed away. But those were some other councilwomen here. We had the first Women Town Justice, Bonnie Cram, served with us for about two and a half, almost three years. The first female assessor was Molly Wanted. I'm sure that Eric remembers her. The first female town clerk was one of my predecessors, Irma Settorelli. First female receiver of taxes was my mother, who served for 28 years. So there was a lot of, a lot of women that, if you go back in time, were really before their time, because they were leading the charge for the rest of us. And they talk about the glass ceiling, and then those were the ladies that held us up and got us to where we want to be.
Louisa, who was the first councilwoman?
The first councilwoman, I believe, was Kathy Bertay. Yes, and she was in 1978, I believe.
You came after her, Joe.
Seventy-eight was Kathy Bertay. And we don't talk about them too much here, so tonight I'm going to mention their names. Because like the supervisor said, we have a lot of ladies who work here, and I hope I don't miss anybody. But in my office, we have Mercedes and Josie, who I could not do my job without. Across the hall, we have Darlene, who is new to us, who we're getting used to, and she's getting used to us, and she's working hard. We have Michelle Baker, who works with Lou, who is just another, you know, wealth of knowledge. The Building Department, Barbara, Terry, Vanessa, Dolores, Kathy Stanega, who is a code enforcer, who I don't know how many female code enforcers there are in the county, but we have one. Missy and Rudy, planning and zoning, Anne Marie, Susan, Kathy, Lisa, in the assessor's office. Linda and Nancy in the tax office, Brandy, Casey, Jill, Sarah, and of course, Tony, who we honored here tonight in the accounting office. And my other girls, who we always forget, are the court ladies. Mary Mailer runs a tight ship down there, and she has with her Linda, Justine, Debbie Sayers, and Debbie Farnell. And I'm sure there are many ladies doing dispatching, and I know we have some wonderful female police officers. Many of look like that I could be their grandmother, so I don't really know their names. But just thank you tonight for honoring the ladies that we have here.
Got Kim.
Oh, I can't forget Kim, because she probably won't empty my garbage tomorrow. But Kim has returned to us, and I don't know her last name, because I know her as Kim White, but she's got a very long last name. She was out for a bit on medical, and when she came back, I said, thank God, I won't have to get up on primary day at 4 o'clock, because Kim is back to work, and she will get the people in and out. That's a lady, I think, who doesn't get as much applause as she really needs, because when she was out, unfortunately, gentlemen, I hate to say it, we had two men doing the job of one lady. And she is back now, and that's the truth. That is the truth. And she's back, and thank you, Eric, for reminding us about Kim. Thank you.
Hey, what about the elephant that you didn't speak about right there?
Oh, yeah, the little mastodon lady is here. That's Dorothy the Mastodon, which was a gift from the Nozworthies to the receiver of taxes, and she will now be living in town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Like I said, who runs Tonnawalk Hill? Okay, Commissioner, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Town Board. Just real quick, tonight, everybody's covered a lot of the stuff that's been going on. Like I said, extremely busy winter has turned into extremely busy spring. The blacktop plant did open this past Monday, so we've been out. We're hitting potholes as fast as we can. We're getting them done. So I want to thank everybody for doing that. Again, the downfall of a tough winter is road damage and potholes, and we're out there and we're making repairs. The Waukele Golf Course is open. Last Friday, we had 160 golfers golfing at the golf course. We're looking forward to another great season. Right now, it's walking only, and they're hoping to have carts out by Monday. Corn's Campground spoke with those folks the other day. They're ready to go for the 2022 season, and they're going to be opening in early April, so keep an eye on the website and the Corn's Campground website for that. As we spoke, the build-out and the PD is continuing. Parks is very busy getting all of our parks ready into shape. Little League Complex, of course, and opening day in Little League Parade is scheduled for April 9th. I believe that's the day. That's correct? Okay, so we'll be ready for that. Bulk pickup, you will be getting a postcard in the mail with all the details as to what you can and can't put out, with all the dates and times, so please pay attention to that. Lastly, a couple of things real quick. Again, Craig, congratulations to Mike Sorrentino, who was recently promoted HUO1 at the DPW. And I also want to thank the supervisor and the board for their support with all the recent promotions where we're allowed to put people into work descriptions and pay scales that actually meet their qualifications. Congratulations to our DPW employee, RJ Carson, and his wife Susan. They had a new baby boy back in late February. That's number three on the Carson Ranch, and he's a fine young man that works for us. Again, tonight, congratulations to all of our award recipients. It was very nice to see people recognized. Again, of course, when it comes to firefighters, female firefighters, and I always go back to Howells. That's where I've been a member for 40 years this year, so everybody can do the math on that, joined when I was 16. Had the privilege of having the first female firefighter, Sherry Nyger, join in 1996 when I was the fire chief out there. So that was awesome, and it was great to see everybody here tonight. Just real quick, on the Little League Parade on the 9th, we will be all ready. We'll be ready to go. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be there that day. I'll be actually on my fifth Hudson Valley Honor Flight. I'm going down again for the third time as a bus leader, and I know we have a couple of veterans, of course, in the room, and a couple of veterans of Honor Flights.
We've got eighty-one vets going on this flight. We have six from World War Two, and my question was, where have they been hiding? We have one gentleman who's a hundred and one years old, who's going on the flight. No female veterans this flight. But like I said, we're looking, we're looking very forward to getting back in the air. It's been three years since we've taken the veterans down, so that's happening again. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. So I'll add on to Louise's list, Gina Crawford, who is here tonight from our Community Council, came out to support. Snuck in late. We caught you though coming in. Thank you for being here. As always, great, great contributor to our community, Police Community Council Secretary, maintaining our books for years and years. Thank you for all the work. My secretary, Lisa Costello, who does a great job. And Kathy Rodriguez was here tonight to support the officers being recognized. She had left early, one of our dispatchers. So as I said earlier, they do make a tremendous difference in public service in our community. I'm going to touch on one issue. Cannabis has been legalized, right? So possession of cannabis is legal, but for anyone that comes into our community that's going to involve illegal firearms and sells cannabis without a license, we're not going to tolerate it. We're not going to tolerate violence in our community. People coming in with guns and engaging in very violent acts. We've had three incidents recently in the location. We're working with our partners at the state, county, and federal level to send the message that we're not going to tolerate this. There's a difference between legal cannabis use for recreational use and people who bring illegal handguns into the town in furtherance of their business, and we're going to continue to clamp down on issues as they arise. Thank you for the new hires. They're going to be a great asset to our department. And I'm going to touch on accreditation a little bit, and then the issue with the schools that Councilman Valentine mentioned. Thank the Town Board for signing the contract with our new accreditation manager. Our first official meeting is tomorrow. Just to recap, accreditation is a state policy or a state set of policies that the department is going to implement. And then at the end, we'll go through a series of inspections, and once we meet this accreditation process, we will provide a higher level of service to our community. We'll be one of just a few accredited agencies in the state and in the county. It's it would be best if all agencies are accredited, but Town Boards don't want to commit to this process, so I thank this Town Board for committing to it. It's a great effort and a great expense, and it'll pay dividends for years and years and years to our community. The process is going to work like this, and I'll share it with the community because it's important and it's a joint effort, right? So here, the accreditation manager, myself, and a designated sergeant with our Police Department, who's Sergeant Dan Ward, who was here earlier this evening. We will draft the policies. The policies will then go to the executive staff in the department. They will go to the supervisory staff and the union. Then they will go to the Community Council for a final review before they go to the Town Board, and then we will share them with the public. Our plan is to roll out one and a half policies a week over the course of the next year and a half. This is going to move rather quickly. I'm saying this because it's important because we want everybody involved in the process, but the policies we're adopting are pursuant to state standards. So if there's going to be a recommendation or deviation from these policies, it has to be for good cause. We appreciate the public's input. We certainly want the town, the community's input, the Community Council, and the citizens' input, and certainly the Town Board has to have final say, as Town Council does. But there's going to be changes. It has to be for good cause. Just because we adopt the policy doesn't mean we're going to be married to this policy, for lack of a better term, forever. It's a living, breathing document. As things change, we'll be willing to make changes. So if there are recommendations that you see, if anybody from the public sees these policies, once you roll them out, and there's something they believe is improper, please let us know. We're listening. We're going to do this together as we get through this process. But we have to do it quickly. One point five policies a week, based on the flow chart I just gave you. And Councilman Valentine did a wonderful job talking about the issues with the schools. It's more serious than you can imagine. It's really, really bad. I've never seen anything like this. There's no disagreement here that there's a serious problem with the youth in our schools right now. It's almost out of control. I hear it every day from my police officers in school, the serious assaults we're encountering. There has to be a better way for us to do this. Do this. We're not going to arrest our way out of this problem. This isn't a police problem. This is a community problem. But we have officers in the schools, and we're going to develop a program for them with the consent of, obviously, the Town Board and the school officials. But we're bringing in the best consultants we can find, and we're going to implement the program which teaches emotional intelligence, nonviolent conflict resolution, and, believe it or not, financial intelligence, because studies have shown that many in our community who don't understand the way our economy works fall into the criminal justice system in a negative light. And once we roll out this very brief program that officers will be able to teach, the goal is that we'll be able to help further education in schools as police officers, because our school resource officers are not there to act as law enforcement officers. They're there to act as liaisons between the youth and government, and hopefully with the goal of preventing crime and not there to arrest anybody. So it's a wonderful program. We've had great support. I had a great meeting with two, a state senator and a state Assemblywoman last week, and I meet with the Attorney General on May fifth about this. The New York State Attorney General. So we're getting great support. It's an innovative program. We're looking forward to reporting back further on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Meyer wants to make some more comments?
Sorry, the chief reminded me. I wanted to congratulate Amy Creedon and Ms. Adamo. Amy Creedon was named the new Superintendent of the Middletown School District. Ms. Adamo was named Assistant Superintendent of the Middletown School District. So I wanted to congratulate them both, and we look forward to working with them moving forward. I also wanted to mention that I was at the school board meeting last week, and the Middletown School District announced that they were going to have a six and a half percent reduction in school taxes. So in case anybody didn't hear that right, I will say that again, a six and a half percent reduction in school taxes. Don't faint. Don't anybody faint. So I just wanted to announce that because I think that that's good news, and that gets more people out to vote in May for the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just to add to that, I will confirm that is correct. I was at a meeting this morning with the Superintendent and at the Middletown Board of Education, and that's where I got the information. And yes, it is confirmed they are lowering their taxes for Middletown Schools. With that, we're going to go to public participation. We'll go to the audience, three minutes. All right, Mr. Mike Cody?
Hello, everybody.
Thank you for being patient.
We'll try. April first is right around the corner. The banners look like this. This is Larry. The banners look like this. They're two hundred dollars. If you don't get it in by the couple of days, we're going to continue it. Memorial Day, they're up for two years. Then after that, they come down, and if you want it, you're going to have it. So if you didn't get it in early, you still got plenty of time for your picture and everything on that. Also, I want to say is that Louis, you do a great job with Honor Flight. Believe me, I've been there many a times. I haven't gone to Washington DC yet, but it's for the younger generation. My thing is also is in Matty Diner, there's a jar of jelly beans. All you got to do is go in, guess how many jelly beans are in the jar? You win it. So that's another thing that the Vietnam Veterans are doing. And also is, we have, we have still to raise a lot of money for the wall, so we're working on that. We're working on a couple of things. The bike ride, we're going to be at the Texas Roadhouse. We're going to have a money drop. We're going to be doing different things. But this year is an honor. It's an honor for people to put, to put their loved ones on the banner. It's an honor, believe me. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom?
No.
Anyone in the audience? Zoom?
No.
Audience?
Over at Figaro, sixty-three Blomel Road. Happy birthday. Like to thank the DPW Police Department. Everybody at Town Hall, it's been a crazy winter. See, I saw the police out helping people in the craziest weather. The town came out. I don't want to talk about the snow anymore. So I just want a couple of things I want to go over. You know, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. We all love having something good-natured and fun to do. The town always puts together wonderful events for the public. Mr. Supervisor yourself said, you know, previously that the town could not afford the previous supervisor's budget, needed staffing and raises for town employees. And now we're up to spending twenty-five thousand dollars or so on the anniversary celebration. And now we're looking at doing this for an entire year. It looks like that's going to be heading if you run that out. Looks like a hundred thousand dollar event for the year. How many employees could have been hired? How many people at Town Hall could have used that money for a raise? So far, I have not seen a budget at any of the meetings for these events. Last night, we heard about a banquet. How much money will taxpayers pay for that? And is the entire town invited, or is that by invitation only? Did the Board approve a banquet or decisions related to how town money will be spent? By an, or is it being made by an unelected committee? Or, so where can I get the vendor list? And then, not answer today, we'll look at this in the future. Where can I get a vendor list? Will there be a running total of taxpayer expenses for the event being posted on the website so we can track where that money is going? And, you know, after what was said last night about the controls, the accounting controls, I believe this needs to, you know, close look at it. There should be no additional spending on this until the Accounting Department has been straightened out, and the books are closed for two thousand and twenty-one. And if we cannot afford new hires and staff raises, what message are we sending town employees when we're spending this kind of money on feel-good stuff? I think it would be better off in their bank accounts. Also, open meeting. One of the things, we like the events like tonight. It's great to recognize people in the community, and I have nothing against that at all. But I think it may make sense to set up a separate meeting once a month where we're doing that recognition. So that way, when it comes to these public meetings, we can get out of here earlier. And I'm sure everybody else would like to get out of here earlier too, because a lot of people don't want to be up this late. I get up five o'clock in the morning. I've been at these meetings sometimes, eleven, eleven-thirty. So it might make more sense to set up a complete separate meeting, or even like that Sunday where we did the coffee. That was a lot of fun, you know, meeting over at the coffee talk. Now, if you're hearing discussions last night about the Econo Davies report, a few things stuck out in my mind. How's the Town Board not reviewed any accounting policies in what looks to be better part of a decade? How's it Town Board did not know there were no written policies for that period? We've heard repeatedly from the board members that all this is good and everything's clean, and that's before your time. Okay. You know, as a matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago, comments were made here that all the Econo Davies report items were being implemented, and then some. You know, when last night's meeting showed that that was absolutely not true. And for the last five years, the public's been led to believe that there are no problems in the Accounting Department, when in fact, the Board has not reviewed policies for a decade or more. The town books are not reconciled. That three minutes? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
That's perfect, Luke. Chief, Town Board, Will, Ms. Ingracia. First, I wanted to commend the Town Board on the event last month for Black History Month. It was, it was great to see that in the town. One thing that hasn't been acknowledged, to my knowledge in this town, and going back two hundred and fifty years, are the black and indigenous people that have been enslaved in this town. Town of Walkill is kind of fortunate in the fact that we have, the slave book is actually in the lobby here where some other towns misplaced theirs. So I hope on this anniversary and celebratory event, the people that were enslaved in this town that helped build this town are acknowledged, because I see people that they were enslaved to have streets around town named after them. So I hope that some of the speakers and things that are going on, maybe even a placard or something in this town acknowledges the fact that people at one point in time in the history of this town were enslaved in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone else? Audience? Make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second by Eric Valentine, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night. Thanks for coming.